The number sixteenth meeting of Brainerd Planning Commission to order. First up, Mr. Tansky, a roll call.
Yes. Calerus. Lambert. Foley. Jaeger.
Yes.
Woodward.
Here.
Duval.
Here.
Gorham.
Here. Very good. I'm looking for approval or change to tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. There we go. Likewise, moving to item four, the minutes from August seventeenth, looking for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the minutes.
All second.
Second. Very good. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're moving along to item number five, new business, rural service districts. I look forward to this conversation because this is a subject that was mysterious and I had no idea it even existed. I had no idea. So educate us, please, Mr. Tansky.
Okay, Mr. Chair. So this is an item that actually came before the city council on August seventeenth. And at that time, Mr. Greg Jalinski of ninety-eighty-nine Dahlmar Drive was requesting to have one of his properties added to the rural service district. He owns two properties. One, his home sits on, one he uses to access the property and his home sits on. His home was not in the rural service district, so he was asking council to be added to the rural service district. Upon consideration, the city council agreed to, directed staff to begin the process for adding Mr. Jalinski to the rural service district. At this point, we have gone through the public hearing and the first reading for that, and the council will have the second reading and approve that ordinance. It's an ordinance amendment this upcoming Monday. But simultaneously, they directed staff to bring the rural service district as a whole to the planning commission for some discussion. They're looking at what's the future of the rural service district. A little bit of the history, as I put in the packet behind the rural service district, this is created in nineteen eighty-six by ordinance eight forty-four. The purpose was that the taxes for municipal purposes excluding bonded indebtedness shall not exceed eighty percent of the full municipal taxes levied for the remainder of the city. Also talked about whenever any parcel of land in the rural service district received water and/or sewer or is rezoned, said parcel of land shall be transferred from the rural service district to the urban service district. And the levy then shall be on the same basis of the property taxes levied for the urban service district. And then in nineteen ninety-six, the city council amended the service district by reducing the tax levy from eighty percent to fifty-two percent. So each year, the council adopts a tax levy, and those parcels or properties within the rural service district pay fifty-two, were paying eighty percent of that, now they're paying fifty-two percent. That was based on a recommendation by the EDA. From minutes that I gathered from meetings of the EDA in May of nineteen ninety-six, as well as looking at some city council meeting minutes from nineteen ninety-six, as well as getting some insight from Alderman Kelly Bevins, who was on the council at that time, it appears the basis for amending the rural service district tax rate was to encourage annexation. Really, the concern was why would anyone in a township or in unorganized, unorganized Crow Wing County want to come in, be annexed into the city, knowing that the area in which they're being annexed is still not serviced by sewer and water, which is one of the main reasons why to be in the city of Brainerd is to have sewer and water. So they're not going to get sewer and water, but their taxes are going to increase from what they pay in either a township or an organized county. So why would someone want to come in, really not receive that benefit of sewer and water, only to have their taxes jacked up? No one would want to do that. So the idea was lower the tax rate so it's pretty much somewhat even to what they're paying in either a township or unorganized county. One thing is too, other than sewer and water, which is not a levied expense, so sewer and water, we don't put in levy, that is only a user fee, properties within the rural service district receive no fewer services than the rest of the community. So if they're on a city street, the street still gets maintained, they have fire service, they have police service. You know, they receive all the other services other than sewer and water that the rest of the community gets. Kind of a current state, as I put in there of the district, I reached out to the Crow Wing County Assessor's Office. They provided me with a list of the current parcels that they have as in the rural service district. Currently, there are a hundred and ninety parcels, of which I identified forty-three as tax exempt in one way, shape, or form. So either they're owned by a tax exempt entity. Generally, it's either they're owned by a tax exempt entity or they are tax forfeited. So in one of those two ways, they're tax exempt, or yeah, so pretty much those two ways. And then prior to Mr. Jalinski's request, from what I have seen, a property had not been added to the rural service district in over a decade. So looking back, when I'm trying to figure out to create the ordinance amendment to add Mr. Jalinski, the last time we amended the district back was in two thousand and ten. And that time, it was removing parcels. So I think we've added parcels in the past. Again, it's been over a decade since we have. Most of the amendments that I've seen, they were to remove parcels because either they were rezoned or primarily they received sewer and water, and then they were removed. So that's kind of the state of the rural service district in your packet. I just created, I just left you with a number of the historical documents surrounded about the rural service district to kind of understand the history. And so, Mr. Chair, that's kind of where we're at.
Very good. I'm going to open the, opening except for questions. Mr. Jaeger.
Mr. Chair, thank you. One part of what I, when I was reading through this documentation, one thing kind of stood out to me, and that is the nineteen eighty-six ordinance number eight forty-four. One line in there says that whenever a parcel of land in the rural service district receives water and sewer or is rezoned, said parcel of land shall be transferred from the rural district to the urban service. So I'm wondering if this doesn't, isn't a factor in what we're about to embark in with our new zoning map and that. So I just want to point that out because I think if we didn't know this, we might potentially be making a zoning change and impacting some people without even knowing it. So this also may be something that just helps us make the decision for, you know, through our greater vision. So I just want to point that out, not just a comment more than a question.
Good points.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Chair. Please.
David, the one aspect of this is new annexation, you know, presuming that we spread outward where we don't have infrastructure. Can you tell me of the county parcels within the boundary of this current city? Do we have sewer and water already going past those areas? Say, up Riverside Drive.
So one thing-
Around the industrial park and such, there are places where we have pockets of county land surrounded by city land, right?
Mm-hmm. So where you would see that most, and I provided a map in your packet that our GIS intern put together for me. So one of those areas, I'll point out, if you were the northwest area, so we're talking Wise Road. Right now, water and sewer goes all the way at Beaver Dam, it hits Wise Road, takes a right, goes down Dahlmar Drive, about, about six, six parcels on either side and stops. So about half of Dahlmar Drive, the Van Etten City. The other area right outside would be just north of that, so it gets Wise Road and then cuts across, not on Wise Road, but actually through property, to Serene Pines and Sugarberry Court area. So that area, that Serene Pines cul-de-sac, has sewer and water. But the rest of that area, you know, so you have a lot of county that's actually right there if you were to continue to go north on the Sugarberry Court Street. So that water is right there. So that's that section. Also, if you were to go south, so the southwest corner, the Lively property, sewer and water goes all the way down and stops at Mississippi, I think that's Mississippi Drive, that very far southwest corner. So that stops there. Lively property is in the city limits, so you don't have to worry about that there. And then if you go down to the industrial park area, so to your question, DC Drive, which is the furthest southeast corner of the industrial park, or what we call Phase Four, that has all sewer and water. Wright Street, which is on the, I think it's the north side of the, I believe, it doesn't show real well here, but it's on the north side of the fairgrounds, that has sewer and water. So the fairground property is all surrounded by sewer and water. And so that, I would say that southeast and east side of the city that goes against kind of the city limit line, all of that area has sewer and water. So if you were to, in theory, annex any further property on the southeast side of the city, it would not, you'd still have to extend it, but it's right pretty much at the city limit line in all those areas.
And the Riverside Drive area is equally fits that description?
Yeah, we have sewer and water that I believe it goes all the way on Riverside, Riverside all the way. I believe it goes all the way up to Wise Road. The interesting thing there is at the time that, from my understanding, that Wise Road was extended with sewer and water, at that time, properties were given the option to connect. If they connected, they were annexed. If they weren't connected, they didn't have to annex. So that's why when you look at this map, Wise Riverside Drive looks funky because a lot of properties chose not to, and so you have these pockets all up inside Riverside Drive. The one other area that I would say along Riverside Drive, if you want to talk about potential future annexations, is along McKay Road. Water and sewer goes from McKay until it hits about, I think it hits about Highview Circle and then North Town, and it stops. And then all of that peninsula of Gilbert is in, unorganized and does not have sewer and water.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah, please.
So, you know, where I'm thinking about this is if we were to parse out and say, you know, future expansion outward, radiating outward annexation might be one thing that addresses maybe the origin of these these ordinance amendments here about dealing with the rural district. But if we were thinking about annexation within our current circle, and if we've got pipes going pretty darn close, if not even at the ends of the driveways, we might want to think about this in different ways. You understand where I'm coming from, that one is to say, our comp plan says, you know, infilling and trying to tidy things up a bit on the inside of our boundaries and such, that we may approach that rural service district need differently than if we were to then project outward where we would then have to deliver services later in time, and then the argument about incentivizing becomes important there. I just want to make that point of clarification, or at least that opportunity, how we might parse this out going forward.
Good points. Other questions?
I'm going to go back to the number you're talking about. I think you mentioned a hundred and ninety-six properties, and then you said like fifty were either-
So a hundred and ninety parcels with forty-three is tax exempt, so roughly a hundred and forty-seven are tax paying.
That's the number I'm looking at there. Has anybody tried to do an analysis of what the city would gain if these properties paid full taxes?
So I think, let me double check, Mr. Chair, I thought I put that in my, yeah, so in, on page two of my memo, I did calculate that. So right now, for the payable twenty twenty taxes, those a hundred and forty-seven parcels are tax paying, paid or are going to pay a total of sixty-eight thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. And I actually took each parcel that was in the spreadsheet and went on to Crow Wing County and looked at what their tax statement was. So I calculated that number. So if you do a rough math and say they're going to pay, and that's at that fifty-two percent rate. So doing some rough calculation of what they would have paid, if they had paid the full one hundred percent of what the tax levy is for payable twenty twenty, they would have paid a sum of a hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents, or for a difference of sixty-three thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. So you could, you could argue that the city forewent sixty-three thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. One question we don't have answered at this time is when the city sets its levy, so we, you know, quick thing about budgeting, if you want to know where, we say, here's our expenditures minus any other revenues we have, and then the remainder is what we have to tax for. And then that sets, kind of sets our levy, our tax rate. The finance director, when the council approves, that's a very simple, simplified version of what levy is. But when the council approves that levy, the finance director then sends that over to the county, and then the county does their magic in that, you know, they look at everything from is a parcel residential, commercial? If it's residential, is it homesteaded? Is it in the urban service district? Is it tax exempt for another or tax reduced because the person's, you know, a disabled veteran, things like that? So they take all those into account for every single property. So one of the questions we had as staff is, okay, that, these parcels in the rural service district are paying fifty-two percent. So in theory, roughly sixty-two thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents is being redistributed somehow. Because when we send it over there, we're assuming everyone's paying a hundred percent. So how that gets, how the county figures that out, we're still not a hundred percent sure.
All right. Any other thoughts or questions before we go next, the next step here? I just got to ask a general question. What is the city council thinking? Would they like us to think, like, make a recommendation to say, we do without this? Did we study it further? I feel like we need to learn a little more before we-
Yes, and I don't think the council is not necessarily looking for the planning commission to make a decision tonight or, you know, in the next thirty days. It was something that, you know, hadn't been really brought up to them in really over a decade since the last time we amended it. So I think all the, the only council member that was on the council at the time was Alderman Bevins. And so one of the things they just thought of is, you know, they thought, okay, at this time, there was, it made sense to add Mr. Jalinski based off his request and the conditioning of his, where his property sits. But they really just wanted to send it back to the planning commission of, you know, review this and I think make a recommendation whether or not the planning commission still thinks, believes that the rural service district is still something that's needed or not. Or should it be altered in some way? You know, to Commissioner Jaeger's point, you know, also looking at how is, what we're about to embark with updating the zoning code and potentially changing the zoning map, how could that potentially affect the rural service district? You know, if you're looking at potentially absolving it, well, it would naturally absolve itself with the zoning district change. If you're looking at not absolving it, well, then we need to make that known also to council so that should the zoning map change, we aren't negatively affecting, we're doing something to make sure that the rural service district doesn't get absolved unintentionally.
Any zoning change we make would affect this, right? Any zoning change?
Just by the way it reads.
According to the founding ordinance, yes.
Okay.
And when I look at the amendments that I've seen of, that's amending the rural service district, all those amendments, the only thing that they amend is what parcels are in the service district.
Okay.
To that, to that point, Mr. Chair, if I looked at section six of the ninety-six ordinance, and that repeals the eight forty-four, the eighty-six version, I don't, I don't see the rezoning. Am I seeing it someplace else? It says, section six, whenever any parcel of land in the rural service district receives water or sewer, said parcel of land shall be transferred from the rural to the urban, and the levy shall be adjusted. Is there a different place where the rezoning appears in the, in the ordinance ten twenty?
What you're saying that supersedes the-
It's repealed in section one. This one no longer applies. This is the new guy, or now.
Certainly seems like they're repealing the, the section, they're repealing the idea of the zoning change. Whether that was intentional or not, it seems like that's what they did.
Yes, and I can't, and Commissioner Duval, I can't speak to whether or not that was intentional. When I was looking in the minutes of the ninety, of when they made this, made ordinance ten twenty, they really didn't seem like they were worried about that as much as kind of the fairness of bringing people into cities.
Disincentivizing.
In the incentive of coming to city limits. So whether that was intentional or not, I feel like, I can, we can speculate that it might have been, or otherwise why you essentially just copy and paste, but-
But it just looks like that does, that does not apply in this ordinance. That's not a, a cleaving criterion.
The irony is that one of the biggest arguments I've always heard about annexing is that you're getting all this property revenue, tax revenue. And so I'm not shocked, but I'm kind of surprised to go, really? So we, we, we came up with this, we said, you know, we want to get all this property and add all these services to the property, and at the same time, we're just going to discount the revenue. It seems a little-
So during the council meeting on the August seventeenth, Alderman Bevins gave a little bit insight again, as he was on the council at that time, I think it was very early on on his tenure on the council. And one thing he's, the words he used, this was during the late nineties, mid nineties, when the city was, in his words, in a land grab against the city of Baxter. And so I think that was kind of part of this is, we're just going to grab as much as we can. You know, we don't, they might not have even had necessarily intention of providing these services, but it's kind of just, we're just going to grab as much as we can and figure out how to get people to agree to come into the city of Brainerd versus the city of Baxter.
Very good. Duval, please.
David, it sounds like the percentages were maybe a number based on comparable tax burden in the townships versus the city. So these, this fifty-two percent is based on something other than-
In nineteen ninety-six.
Ninety-six, and we don't know what it looks like in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one proposed.
If we take the sixty-three thousand dollars and divide it by the hundred and forty-seven properties, you're looking at, my math says something like four hundred and twenty-five, four hundred and fifty dollars worth of extra taxes.
And when you look at, when you look at, there are a number of properties that, you know, there are actually a couple of properties that their tax bill for twenty twenty was fifty cents, based off the fact of how small they are, and a lot of them are vacant, some of them are wetland. But then again, there are some properties that if they were to be taken from the rural, I think the one that I saw that would be the biggest change is if they were taken from the rural service district and placed in the urban service district, their taxes would, in theory, go up about twenty-five hundred dollars. So there is kind of that, you know, some of these parcels are going to have zero to no, like, the change is going to be extremely minimal, but some fewer parcels would have a significant increase.
Right. I think we're wrestling with a lot of issues here. We're wrestling with what our next step is, or maybe not zoning, since we've kind of come to the conclusion that the zoning has nothing to do with it here. Out of fairness, it just seems, it seems archaic. It seems like an archaic thing that we have here. And then the question becomes, how do we most tactfully deal with it? And I'm just going to throw out different ideas. One idea is maybe you phase it out over time. Grandfathering or something like this to phase it out. The commissioner, have any thoughts about what we do next? What if we had, for instance, what if we had staff look at some options? I'm just trying to kind of figure out where we go.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree with the, I don't know if archaic is the right term, but it's just, it was an attempt at some point in time to try and not disincentivize people from coming into the fold. And I go back to those, those little islands within our boundary that are county land and saying, how, especially so close to infrastructure, how can we incentivize those so that we can tidy up within our larger outer circle boundary, if you would, of the city? This apparently doesn't do it, right? So what does do it? And so that, it would be a helpful research angle to come back to the council with some, or the commission with some ideas on, you know, I mean, quite frankly, you might flip it around and simply say that maybe there's a payment to come in. Just turning, rather than trying to incentivize by making, you know, the cost of coming in less, why don't you flip it around? Or give us some other ideas. Play around with the world of possibilities to address what, what? It seemed like the intent was to address what is currently a disincentive to come within the fold of the city, city boundary. And there are some critical places, I think, consistent with our comp plan, and we would probably want that to happen. And if we put barriers in there, how do we break them down? This tool doesn't seem to do it, so it's not helping us in any way. Other than reducing revenues in certain ways.
Right. And again, one thing that I know came up at the council level, too, is that when, again, when you looked at what was the one major service these properties aren't getting, and that's sewer and water. Well, sewer and water is not on, is not a levied expense. So that was, that was, I know, a number of council members brought that up of, when it comes to levy expenses, they're actually receiving no, no fewer services than anyone else in the community because sewer and water is something that when it's put in the ground, it's assessed. And then once you connect to it, it's the user, your monthly sewer and water bill like everyone else gets.
Service charge.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
I'm wondering if it would be helpful just to roughly identify whether or not we are all in agreement that the rural service district should, that the means to the end should be to remove it first. Or is there a conversation to be had that there might be members that feel like it has a place and should stay?
Let's open it up to the commissioner members. Any thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Please.
I see advantages to bringing some of the outlying properties into the city limits by offering the current system of they can come in and they keep their reduced property tax rate. On the other hand, I see some benefits to being in the city of Brainerd, and it's, it's worth paying for, it's worth supporting your city. And I think that more people should be alerted to the needs of our fire department, the needs of our police department, the needs of our city, supporting that, the community efforts that our tax dollars go to, as well as the benefits of, say, your homeowner's insurance being within the city limits and having access to the fire department and fire hydrants, those types of amenities, I think. There's some things to look at.
Kind of two different issues, because one issue is going to be the properties outside of the limit, the other is the people who are in the limits, but they're getting the fifty-two percent. So it's kind of separate issues there. Other thoughts?
How does, when we consider the future land use zoning map, how does that affect different districts like this? I'm just, just asking.
Well, I think after Mr. Duval's discovery of the, that the ninety-six just took out the, took out everything about that, I, the zoning changes, I don't think it does. That's just, I guess.
That question for David, if he might be, see a different angle on that as well.
Seeing how we're going to be considering the future land use map, is there any way to tie this in with any of that? Or is it just two, like apples and oranges?
I don't know if they're necessarily, they're connected, but I would say they're connected, but they're not. They're connected as in, if you're going to keep the rural service district, when we're looking at the future land use map, part of the future land use map is also potentially considering expansion. I know within our comprehensive plan, and right now, we're really focusing on infill, but there's also that expansion piece and what that might look like. And to that extent, you kind of go, okay, if we're looking at expansion, do we want to keep? You know, how do we encourage that expansion in a way? And is the rural service district a means to the end or not? What I guess what I'm hearing right now is that it's, in nineteen ninety-six, it was hoping that it was a means to that end, but at this, in two thousand and twenty- but at this, in two thousand twenty, not. Um, and maybe there are other means, um, to be doing that, if that's even something that the city should be looking at when we annex people or bring, or expand, giving them some kind of incentive, or are we just saying the incentive is you get to be in the city of Brainerd?
One quick question, Mr. Chair, please. Mr. Chansky, is this a Brainerd anomaly, or is, is a rural service district a very common, a very common citywide hurdle out there right now that other, other municipalities are working on?
I don't think it's uncommon. Um, as to how active other cities' rural service districts or urban service districts are, I'm not sure. I haven't done a lot of research into what those are.
Thank you.
I think I have a philosophical, go ahead, before I, my philosophical question.
If you philosophize.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, uh, part of the tax assessment, or the, the value in dollars that you pay in taxes is based on your assessed value, and that's based on use. Um, so your example earlier of if you've got a lot of wetlands, there's not a lot of taxable base. If you have a lot of forest land, there are programs that a landowner with a reasonable amount of acreage, I think maybe it's ten or ten or more, or maybe it's fifteen or more acres, can, can basically enter a, a forest planning program that gives you a tax classification that lowers your, your base. To me, this, this does feel like it's a little double dipping, you know, when the tax value is, is based on, you know, for the reasons that, um, water and sewer are not levied expenses. A lot of your assessed value is already taking into effect that you have a lot of undeveloped land. And, and, and so then to, to then add another discount on top of that for, for properties that are already in the city, that are, your observation is they're largely receiving the same services, seems like a double dip. And, and, and so I'd be curious to learn a little bit more about, you know, the county's magic, as you, you were, you were saying, and how they're coming up with those values. And, and, and maybe there are partnership opportunities with the soil and water district or something like that to get access to some of these tax plans, if we feel that that might, might be a, a benefit to help them reduce their overall assessed rate. I think there's pathways here, and just, it just strikes me that it's, it's almost like you're already taking, taking an account that these aren't improved properties and, and stuff in that assessment value that the county produces.
The philosophical point I want to make is that the city should feel good about the city, the services they provide and who they are, and this idea that we, you know, we're so hungry to add people and, and get more people in that we're going to give you the special deal. I kind of say booey. I, I think we do a great job. We're a great city. And, you know, if you're part of the city, you got to be, step up to the table and, and do what everyone else does. And that's a kind of a simple, uh, and not looking at the mic, it's hitting the nuances of it, which, which we probably should do, but philosophical, but I just kind of think, I, I hard to see, it's hard to see the point of it. I think we're kind of cheapening ourselves, and it has an extreme to say we're cheapening ourselves, but we kind of are. Um, yeah, please, Teresa.
Mr. Chair? Um, if we were to look at phasing out some of this, would it be reasonable to stop the transfer of this exemption when the sale of a property occurs? So it, it holds with the current owner, and when there's a sale of property, then they move into the...
An interim use.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that, that's an idea. As far as kind of, uh, what we want as a result tonight, um, I think, are we agreed that we'd like to get some more information from, uh, from, from, uh, from David and from the, from, uh, from his department, from the city, in terms of, of some of my questions were, were good questions? And take it up next month? I don't think this is a pressing matter at all. Yeah.
No, I'm comfortable with that. I guess I'd like to wrap my head around something that could potentially, you know, cause, you know, financial impact on, on people. But I do think it, it, it does seem a bit antiquated, maybe, from where we are today too, so...
You're part of a city. It's not just your little spot that you're part of. You're part of so much else, and so much is provided for you, and every day you're using those services that are provided for you.
And, and if I may, Mr. Chair, you know, maybe this helps the planning commission, maybe it doesn't. You know, at this point, it's, today is September sixteenth. Um, at this point, even if the planning commissioner make a recommendation tonight, and we went through the process, it'd be about mid-October before, say, an ordinance was, were to go into effect to remove the rural service district. And I know, I, I'm not all a hundred percent sure of what the county's deadlines are for things. Like, I know they have deadlines for declaring homestead. And so the chance, the chances are, any decision the planning commission makes as a recommendation to council is not going to affect payable twenty twenty-one taxes.
Right.
So I don't think there, to that extent, you know, I don't think there's any concern about, you know, are we going to be affecting people's tax payments next April, um, or June? Was it actually June? So I don't think there's that concern. It'll be more of the, whatever decision gets made will more likely ha, will be affecting payable twenty twenty-two. Is what I anticipate unless a decision were to be made tonight and process moved forward quickly.
Mr. Chair? Are you looking for a motion, uh, to, to maybe move forward with this, uh, request to staff? Or do we want to make it just a general request to staff?
I'm thinking a general request to staff is going to give a little more information here. I think we, we could, um, we could approach this with the council in a couple of directions. One, we could just give one recommendation. This is what you do. It may be, may make some more sense to give them a couple of options. Say, here's the, the slow, you know, doing over ten years, dissolve this thing, it's got to go away within ten years. Or versus, and I'm just presenting two extremes, versus the one that says it's gone tomorrow, boom, we're moving on. Uh, I think of, of the sixty-three thousand dollars, that's real money, but it's not going to make the difference between the city surviving and not surviving. But I, I think there's a good philosophical point we need to look at here, so...
It's nice to know that, I think options are a good way to learn and understand things more. And if we can come up with some good options, by the time we make a recommendation, that'll help them with, with whatever they decide to.
It also is kind of an astute political move that we're kind of like, sort of punting up there, letting them make the tough calls. It will be, have a tough call, ultimately. You'll be raising taxes on people. And I'm not really, I don't know, I'm not sure if I signed up for that.
And I anticipate, I anticipate, Mr. Chair, any decision to alter the rural services, obviously it's going to have to be done by ordinance, and we'll have public hearings. But I definitely anticipate that there'll be potentially more than one public hearing on this matter before it's all said and done.
Uh, would we be comfortable, yes, and let's get to the point.
Well, that, it, the, the two things that I think, two themes that I've, I've heard in this conversation are, number, number one, are there examples elsewhere of, of other communities trying to address this in, uh, this need? And then, and then the second theme that I've heard is around, you know, what options might there be? And we've rattled a few just in this conversation, and it's probably just, just peeling that out, our envelope of a way in getting at the heart of what's inside. So there's more, and maybe we ask, uh, staff to, to try and provide us with some, some examples that, that other communities are doing out there, trying to address thematically the same thing. And, and then what options we might take from, you know, for example, the phased idea, or... And, and maybe some further research on just what it, being clear what this was trying to solve would, would, would help as well.
I don't think we need a resolution tonight. Are we comfortable with the direction that we're giving David here? Anything, anything else we want to add?
No, I think that summed it up pretty nice.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right.
It was cool.
A cool history.
Yeah, it really was. That just kind of, the whole, I, I looked at that, and I looked again and went, what? Yeah, yeah. All right. We're going to open a public forum at, uh, I can, we have a new clock there. I like it. At, at six forty on the new clock there, is the chance for anybody to comment on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no takers, I will close the public hearing again at six forty. Uh, with that, we're going to move on to item seven, old business. Uh, first up will be a text amendment. Uh, we're looking at amending section five fifteen point six-two of the, uh, central business district, looking at commercial greenhouses as an interim use. And, uh, well, how about, I think, we're doing a hearing tonight, correct? So, are we doing, yeah, we'll do a hearing, but let's let David kind of, kind of give us all, bring us up to speed on where we're at.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so then as a quick recap, um, Mr. Steve Zalinski, who is here tonight, he, back in, it was at July, I believe, Steve originally submitted that, submitted a request to the city. Uh, was looking to put up, uh, a commercial greenhouse to support their operations. Yesterday's gone. He just wanted to just increase the food offerings and the quality of the food offerings they have. At that time, I, I had to, uh, deny Mr. Zalinski's request due to the fact that it was something that was not supported, uh, by the zoning code. Um, and so I gave Mr. Zalinski some options. Really, the two options he had were either, A, he could appeal my, my decision, my denial to the city council, who serves as a zoning board of appeals. Um, in that situation, he was to be appealing my translation of the code. Option two would be to request a text amendment, um, submit that application to be considered by the planning commission. On August nineteenth, the planning commission, uh, this one originally brought this, well, this was brought forward. And the discussion, uh, during that meeting really just kind of centered around, well, it doesn't necessarily seem like a bad idea when we're looking at, looking at more mixed uses. It seems like something that may be able to fit within, within bounds. Um, and so during that meeting, the, the commission, uh, directed staff to research and draft a proposed amendment to section five one five dash six-two to allow for commercial greenhouses supporting other businesses and as an interim use. So I have, uh, drafted some language, um, that I, I did send out to you all for consideration to get a, a comment back. So in short, I'll just kind of run through what is, what is this proposed, uh, amendment? Um, so this is a proposed to, uh, amend section five one five dash six-two dash five interim uses, add an A. Currently, there are no interim uses in section, uh, five one five dash six-two for commercial greenhouses supporting the operations of a restaurant or floral shop, provided that the, uh, one, the structural framing shall be treated wood, aluminum, or steel, and shall be covered by materials as regulated by section seventeen of this ordinance. Uh, where that came from is one of the discussions, one of the main points that was had by the commission on August nineteenth was about what they look like. I think there was a consensus that we don't, there wasn't, the, the, the planning commission didn't want hoop houses. Um, you know, the, the classic PVC with just plastic wrapping over them. But a, a nice looking structure, uh, might be allowed. Um, so that's what we're looking at again. Framing would be treated wood, aluminum, or steel, and then regulated by materials in section seventeen. That was another discussion. When I did do some research into what materials are used for the paneling, um, it came, but it came back that there were about five or six different materials specifically called out in section seventeen. And those are pretty much still today, um, as to when this ordinance was adopted, and I think thirteen, thirteen, two thousand fourteen, are still the main forms of, of paneling. There didn't seem to be anything new or best thing, um, that has come out. It's still pretty much those five or six items. So in that section, um, I felt like section seventeen, when it came to paneling, did cover what we needed. We just needed to call out what we wanted the structure to be. Uh, structure shall not exceed fifteen feet in height. Um, again, this is just to make sure that we're not getting these, um, monstrosities, and they are kind of staying within general height of buildings. Look, a, a once, a single-story building generally is in that fourteen to fifteen foot height anyway. So if it's right next to a single-story building, it's not going to be towering over that building. It might be pretty much in the same height. The structure may be located in a separate lot from the restaurant or floral shop it supports, provided the lot is within one hundred and fifty feet of the business. And the structure shall be, uh, shall meet the non-residential setback requirements of the B-two district as regulated by section sixty-one of this ordinance. Uh, where that came from is one of the things that was also, I, um, put in my denial letter to Mr. Zalinski, is that the property that they were looking at, that, um, is directly across, it's owned by them, but directly across the alley from yesterday is gone. Currently, we only allow accessory structures on the same property as the primary structure. One of the ways I, I purposely worded this amendment is to not use the word accessory, to make it clear that these are standalone buildings. They're not necessarily accessory. They're supporting another use. Um, but at the same time, we didn't, I didn't want to open the door where someone is putting up a greenhouse two miles from their business, or, you know, a, a distance from their business. We want it to still kind of be close by. Um, so a hundred and fifty feet, when you look at, um, a city block's about three hundred feet, you're talking about half a block, roughly half a block away, or maybe two to, depending the width of a, of a lot, three to four lots, roughly. As you may or may not know, in section five one five dash six-two, which is the central business district, it actually goes, when you go to lot, um, lot provisions, there are none. Um, and the idea of that is we're in a downtown, pretty much buildings go all the way up to property lines. Um, however, with that being said, I didn't think it was in best interest to have some, uh, in, if there's a vacant lot out there, um, which there aren't really many, Mr. Zalinski's was one of the very, very few, um, that one could go on. I don't think we still want it right up against the property line. But when I started looking at just at what, what seemed appropriate, um, B-four, which is our general commercial district, um, it was a little too restrictive, requiring twenty-foot sides, forty-foot front, thirty-foot rear. Um, it gets really tight really quick. And so I looked at the, the B-two, which is the neighborhood business district, and that had, um, more of that, the thirty-foot front, twenty-foot rear, five-foot sides, which seemed a little more appropriate for what I think the planning commission's desire was when discussing this. Number four, no outdoor storage. Again, we want these to be considered nice. We don't want this, these turned, the lot itself to turn into storage. And then indoor storage should be limited to material incidental to the operation of a greenhouse. Again, these things are going to be transparent. So we also don't want them to be, especially in the winter, to be turned into a business's private storage facility either, where now they've got their, you know, their snowblow, snowblower in there, and a bunch of other things in there. We want to keep them looking nice because they will be primarily transparent. Uh, number six, to the restaurant or floral shops, it supports cease operations. The greenhouse must be, must be removed within sixty days. Again, this is, goes back to the interim use aspect of this. Um, obviously, if the property is sold, um, the interim use permit is no longer valid because it follows the property owner or the applicant. We're also saying here is even if the property owner still owns the property, but the business that, um, they were using, they were supporting it with, goes out of business or just seeks operations, or maybe even, um, sells, that's a different issue potentially. Um, is that we'd want it gone. We don't, we don't want it just left there. And then finally, sales should only occur at the principal place of business that it supports, that's supported by the greenhouse. So no one should really be selling directly out of the greenhouse. Again, the point of the greenhouse is to support another business, dot, to be a business in and of itself. So that, Mr. Chair, is, um, the ordinance that I am proposing.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Chansky? All right, please.
Mr. Chansky, would you, uh, say that this is a form-based design, a Euclidean, or a hybrid? I'm just curious.
A little bit of both.
I think so, yes.
Um, you, you would get the Euclidean, as we're talking again, mostly, I'm talking, I'm giving you heights, I'm giving you setbacks. But it is a little bit more of a form, especially when we're talking about, number one, that's very much kind of a form-based style, style, um, requirement of, we're saying it must be either treated wood, aluminum, or steel, and what it can be covered by. So in that way, we already, we are governing the form of what it would be.
I was just curious. Thank you.
One other thing I might, I want, I do want to bring up, Mr. Chair, uh, that was arranged by Commissioner Duval, is he asked, did ask the question, do we need information in there about, um, I believe you, anchoring? I believe it was your question. Um, you know, we don't want these things blowing around. Um, and, and the response I gave, uh, Mr. Duval, why I did not include it in there is because the city's policy already states that any structure over two hundred square feet must, uh, requires a building permit. So if you're going to have a... So if you're going to have a structure over two hundred square feet, so if it's over ten by twenty, it's already going to have to get a building permit, and at that point, the building official would review it and likely require, um, with any kind of structure, some kind of anchoring. So it would be covered through the building permit process. So I didn't feel it needed to be necessarily called out in the, um, in the zoning code. And then any accessory structure or any structure under two hundred square feet, we don't require it to be anchored. So again, I didn't think it was necessarily to be in the zoning code.
And we wouldn't expect the city inspector to be too onerous in terms of, or if there would be asking somebody to, uh, to the greenhouse, you know, six foot pilings and all that kind of stuff.
No.
Nothing too onerous.
Good.
All right. With that, let's open a public hearing unless we have one more question. Yes.
Mr. Chair, this is Jen Lambert, just to let you know I have entered the meeting.
Uh, thank you, Jen. Would you like to, uh, did you just enter? Or would you like to, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Duval?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. David, just to be clear, uh, uh, number one, on the, uh, structure framing and, and the covering section seventeen, your intent is to apply that broadly. There are a number of different types of structures within section seventeen, including greenhouses, but your intent is to include all of the potential sightings and coverings that are identified in section seventeen. Am I correct in that interpretation?
Correct. And the other reason I've, I've, I worded it this way is this is the, pretty much the uniform wording throughout the zoning code. Um, in most other places, if it talks about, um, specifically in, in section seventeen, which is our design standards or section, um, it always generally just says in section seventeen or the section. It never really goes into specific, this paragraph or this piece. Um, so part of that was also a uniform piece, um, considering that we are going to be shortly discussing updating the zoning code. I didn't feel it was necessarily, necessarily to get really, um, specific, as this is probably something that will be at least semi-addressed in some way in the next year or so.
Very good.
Follow up, Mr. Mr. Chair.
You bet.
Um, and just if we can, you know, as, as we're taking action on this tonight, if we could fix the typo in that same section as regulated by section seventeen, we can clean that piece up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. All right. Y'all ready for a hearing? Very good. We're going to open a public hearing at six fifty, what am I looking at, six fifty-four? If anybody would like to, uh, address the issue. Steve, uh, anything else you'd like to add? You're good? All right. Do we have, uh, do we have a caller? Uh, Jen, are you out there? Or anybody else out there?
It's me. I'm the caller.
Okay. So, so we have no member, uh, of the public looking to, to join us in, looking at SW.
That's Sean.
That's just Sean. Okay, very good, very good. All right. Well, if we have nothing else for the public hearing, I'm going to close the public hearing at, uh, six fifty-four, so, very good. Any discussion at this point of, uh, at the text, on the text amendment as per, as presented? Comfortable?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Quickly, just as a point in procedure, now that, uh, Commissioner Lambert is with us, uh, moving forward, all votes will need to be taken by roll call.
Oh, okay. Very good.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to enter a motion.
Let's hear it.
Um, move to accept the, uh, the draft interim use, uh, text amendment and, and, uh, forward that on to the city council.
Very good.
Lambert, second.
Thank you, Jen. Any discussion? Uh, hearing done. All right. We're all ready. Let's, uh, let's do a roll call, though.
Lambert.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Woodward.
Yes.
Duval.
Aye.
And Goro.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Very good. Thanks, Steve. All right, we are moving on to item seven B, and this would be, uh,
Just have it on the memo.
There we go. All right, so the seven B, this is, uh, uh, taking up where we were last week. The discussion of hiring a consultant for our zoning code update. I think Mr. Chansky would like to start and make a, perhaps, uh, make a recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you. Um, so I guess this is the moment we've all been waiting for, or maybe it's just me. Um, so as you all are aware, you were here last Wednesday, the ninth. Um, you interviewed six consulting firms who submitted proposals for updating the zoning code. Um, as I informed, uh, in an email to all of them today, you know, I think we're in a very blessed position in saying that whomever, uh, is selected, I think will do a fantastic job in updating the city zoning code. Uh, I know there have been times in which I've had before where it's like you might get three or four, but it's clear that only one can really do the job. I think all of them could do, um, the job. Um, with that being said, I did, said I would make a recommendation to you, um, to kind of parse down, um, whom I believed may serve the city best and what we're looking for. Um, and then I'm going to present that here in just a second. And then the idea, my, my goal is to then kind of use that to spark conversation. By no means is the commission bound to one of my recommendations. Um, I will be recommending two. Um, and I'm going to kind of present in just a second a comparison I have done of these two. Um, once I'm done with that, I'm going to open the floor back up to the commission to discuss, um, ask questions, maybe why not others? Or maybe, um, you don't, you don't agree with my recommendation and, and obviously, you're, you're the ones making the recommendation to the council, and you can kind of go from what you felt from the interviews and looking at the RFPs, um, who you believe might serve the city best. So I didn't have it in your packet, but I have it here tonight. Uh, James, you can go to the next slide.
Drumroll.
I think it's in there. Did you have the right one? Did I give you the right one?
Oh, killing us here. Just killing us, David.
You? I thought he gave you the, I can give you the right one in just a second here. Wow. Wow.
Have a look at this.
It's killing me.
Man.
Yeah, this is like Christmas morning. Oh, this one's not for you.
Mr. Chair.
I would, I would just like to, uh, reiterate something David said. You, you want us to be able to decide on a, a recommendation, or at least, uh, come to, come to some terms tonight in the interest of time, correct?
Yes, in the interest of timing, um, my desire is that the, uh, planning commission do make a recommendation to the city council this evening, so that it can go, uh, to the city council on Monday to have their approval, and then the actual, um, process can start. Obviously, the initial process will be, um, negotiating and creating the contract. So my, my hope would be able to have, have the council, uh, make their approval of the, of the planning commission's recommendation, so that then staff, we can, uh, begin the, the actual discussion, the, the contract creation process with the consultant, and hopefully have that before council on October fifth, so we can get this ball rolling next month. Um, and likely probably have the selected consultant hopefully here with us on, I believe, it is October twenty-first, which would be our regular meeting. So, um, it's the Word document. Nope, not that. You want the Word document. Can you open the Word document? Give it back to me, I'll save it.
Squirt guy.
Just tell us who it is.
We can desert the words.
We can always just talk.
Flip charts.
How about flip charts?
Interpretive dance?
I can just talk you through it if you want.
Yes, I, absolutely. That deserves a motion right there.
Okay. Okay, these are on top of each other. I have them in columns. You'll see it later. So the two I am, I have, first of all, is Swanson, Haskamp Consulting. Uh, the second is Landform Professional Services. Um, and again, I went and kind of did the whys and why not for both of them. Uh, I did, well, I, I, I did tell my, my staff at some point, I felt like, oh, it was getting to the point of splitting hairs because of how I think on par they are.
You could increase the font, please, or just enlarge the document. That would be very helpful.
Zoom it in there.
That's kind of nothing right now.
For the visu- visual and audio impaired.
There we go.
Nicely done. Thank you.
Since we don't have it in nice columns, like I had it, we'll just go one by one. Uh, Swanson, Haskamp, um, couple things I saw is, first of all, uh, they had a, they did provide a not to exceed fee of ninety thousand dollars. Uh, this does allow us, allow us to stay within the two-year fifty thousand dollar, uh, budget. Again, we had fifty thousand dollars that the council budgeted for twenty twenty. On Monday, we had a budget workshop and the, um, preliminarily approved, again, uh, the capital plan, which had another fifty thousand for twenty twenty-one. It allows us to stay within that budget while allowing some cushion for change orders, should they happen. Again, the goal is, I think you heard about those interviews, is the best we can get the scope on from the very beginning, the chances of minimizing change orders we have. Also, making sure we don't delay the process keeps us from having change orders. Uh, another thing that also impressed me is the detailed, uh, calendar, um, with tags that's, um, I believe, if I get there, I have it right here. Technical advisory group. This is the one I wanted. But anyway, the technical advisory group and planning commission each month, and identify deliverable each month. Um, they did say that simple update meetings likely would be done virtu- virtually. So if they're just providing an update to planning commission, I anticipate they would just be here via WebEx. Um, but they do plan on being in Brainerd regularly, and I did think that was very important, um, having them here in the city regularly. Their purport, proposed fourteen-month project calendar achieves a goal of, or at least my goal, of a January twenty twenty-two implementation. In my dream world, what I would like to do is that January one, twenty twenty-two is when this new code would go live. I feel like, um, one, it does go, it's about fourteen months if you start in October, and the idea of starting on January one, I think it's just that easily identifiable, on the new year, it changes. Um, and the final thing was, uh, one of the team members with Swanson, Haskamp Consulting is Mr. Mike Lamb. He is with Mike Lamb Consulting. They've teamed up. Um, and it was my opinion, my professional opinion, um, that, uh, Mr. Lamb is one of the most experienced consultants that was interviewed when it comes to form-based codes. Some of the, uh, things I had against, potentially against, um, Swanson, Haskamp is of the firms that were interviewed, they are the youngest, being only around for only thirteen years. Um, a, a little bit of a lack of familiarity with the area. I say that in comparison to the other firm. I know, uh, Jennifer Haskamp did mention that coming up here as a child, so she has some familiarity. I would say, sir, I, I would just say not necessarily recent familiarity. Um, not as experienced with creating graphical codes. Again, this is in comparison to the other. I don't, I, they handed out, um, during their presentation this, which I think showed a little bit of what they can do. Um, and I'll talk to, again, in comparison to, but I'm talking in comparison to Landform. I'll get to that in a second. And then their fourteen-month project calendar, as I talked to before, as it does achieve my implementation goal, it does leave little time for delay. Um, in their proposal, um, that months twelve, thirteen, fourteen, um, is listed as kind of that prepare and implement. Um, with thirteen and fourteen, they kind of have in dashes. Um, so depending on how we progress, we could potentially actually get done prior to December of twenty twenty-one. But again, if there, for some reason, is a delay in any way, we're really going to be pushing up to that potential January one goal. So that would be kind of a negative in that perspective. Going to Landform Professional Services, approximate fee of one hundred thousand dollars is right within the budget. Uh, as you saw in their, um, proposal, they originally did not have the zoning map in there. Um, but, uh, Ms. Lindahl did, did point out that it'd only be about fifteen hundred dollars to create that zoning map. And I am confident as we, as we look at the scope of work, that we could get the total fee within the one hundred thousand dollars. I don't think that would be a problem. They are very reputable within the Minnesota planning field. I've spoken with a lot of other planners in the area and, in the area and at different conferences, and often when talking about, um, especially people doing zoning code updates, landform commonly is brought up, so they are, um, very reputable. Not that anyone else is not, I want to make that clear, but, um, I hear their name a lot in the area, in, in, within the field. Um, reputation for keeping projects on track and within scope. This actually came from, I, I did conduct some, uh, reference checks with all of the firms. And this is one thing that came back about them, is that Ms. Lindahl is, she proposes a scope, and she does a very good job at keeping on that scope. And if you start to divert from that scope, she points it out that you're going to divert, divert from that scope. And if you want to continue to divert, divert from that scope, she's going to tell you how much it's going to cost you. Um, so she's very good at keeping on the scope and not letting things get off track. Ms. Lindahl is a Crow Wing County slash Aitken County native. Um, she is familiar, familiar, very familiar with this area. She grew up in the area. I think in her interview, she mentioned about how she picked up both of her prom dresses from downtown Brainerd, and even most recently did serve as the community development interim, community development director in Baxter for two years. That was prior to them hiring, uh, Mr. Josh Dody, who's now the community development director there. He's been there for about three or four years. Her proposed ten-month project timeline is well within the implementation goal, um, for January twenty twenty-two. Um, and, and part of that also does allow for some delays, you know, if, variety, if, you know, scope gets, um, jimmy'd a little bit, or if we have, you know, another uptick in COVID or something that might slow us down, we definitely have some wiggle room there. Um, other benefit of ending early gives us, gives us more time for public, uh, information, um, as we get prepared to implement the code. Once it's done, it gives us more time to say, hey, this is the new code, goes effective on January one. Just make sure people are aware of what the, what is in the code and what to expect. Um, their firm is very experienced with making codes graphical and easy to read. Um, they even have on their team, um, they actually directly call out a, a graphical designer. Um, in the Swanson, Haskamp group, they, they, they have someone in there who's listed as GIS and some graphical, but not as specifically, their job is graphics. Um, so they have someone very specifically, this person's graphics, and looking at other codes that they've done, they do a beautiful job in making things graphical, um, and understandable through those graphs. So they're, they're explaining something. They make, they make a, a graphic that really sums it up well to help people understand. Why not? Uh, Landform, again, a little talked about before, change orders will result in costs exceeding the two-year budget of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, unlike Swanson, Haskamp, that appears they will be here pretty much almost monthly. Um, Landform is re, is limiting themselves to five in-person meetings and six virtual meetings over the course of the ten-month project. Um, while their form-based code experience, especially when it comes to hybrid codes, is high, again, I don't think it's as high as, uh, Mike Lamb's with Swanson, Haskamp. And then they do have a smaller team there proposing a team of only three. So two planners, Ms. Lindahl, and another, um, other planner, and then the one designer. Um, so they only have a team of three, while the team with, uh, Swanson, Haskamp, I believe, is five or six. So, um,
And two dogs.
And two dogs.
And two dogs. So that is where I'm at, Mr. Chair. Um, at this point, the reason I ended up giving you two is I felt that, again, I felt that these two firms best served what we were looking for. Again, not that any of the other firms could not have, could not do a fantastic job. I think they could. I just felt that, based off what we were looking for, um, I felt that Swanson, Haskamp Consulting or Landform Professional Service would give us the, the best result. Um, I don't know if I want to use the word bang for our buck, but I think at the end of the day, the best result for what we're looking for in our new zoning code. Um, and from there, I'm kind of looking from the planning commission, thoughts on that? Is there anyone you, as commissioners, are leaning towards? Were these two not on your top lists? And if not, let's talk about who was on your top list and, and kind of, kind of, so you can come to a consensus on who the sl- the city should work with.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chansky. Here's my thought. I think we all should, uh, equally kind of chip in. I'm kind of suggesting we kind of go around just our initial reaction. If you want to say who your favorite was, say who your favorite was. If you need another question to clarify something with David, ask the question. If you need another question to clarify something with David, ask the question. We'll do that. And so we'll start with you, sir.
Okay. I thought all the teams presented really nice RFPs. The two that you picked, David, I think Swanson-Hass Camp, I thought they had a really good understanding of the scope and a really good approach to the scope. I think some of the other companies that came did a better job of having the teams that we'd know on a day-to-day basis present. And I don't know if, how much Ms. Hass Camp or Mike Lamb will be involved at the meetings. I noticed their project manager, who they want to have, was not present, so we have not met. Same with Landform. I don't think we met the core people working on that team. We met the principal, and she was really good. And I think Landform was really clear in their proposal. They did a good job outlining what you'd get for the price. And I thought they did okay on the scope, too. I thought WSB had a strong team representation. I think their cost in the RFP was, I think the meetings and things would have added up. And I think we would have got up to the same price as the other two with them, just the way they kind of worded their proposal. And they have a local Baxter office, but I don't think any of the people on the project team work out of that office. They maybe could have used it to save on some printing costs if they forgot to bring up. Same with KLJ. They have a local office, too, but I don't think, the planning departments in Fargo and Bismarck, I think. He had a really good, that gentleman had a really good understanding of the scope, I thought. And he was kind of a high-level thinker. I kind of liked that. I'm just trying to parse through some notes I wrote down. MSA, I thought they had a really strong team who came and showed up, and they're really personable. I noticed they subbed out to that other company. I was kind of curious what that relationship was. I know the one gentleman had a lot of experience in that other company. And the other one specifically was an illustrator, so I think that's maybe what they brought to the team. But I was a little unclear on the team of the relationship there. And then HKGI, I thought they were pretty decisive, had a good understanding of the scope, too. I thought they offered a lot of meetings. Them and Swanson-Hass Camp, I think, were the most generous with the meetings that they were willing to offer. And they both had similar timelines. The KLJ time, the KLJ cost and schedule were a little higher than everyone else. I guess that's kind of my quick thought on the notes. But yeah, I liked them all, and I'm happy to just discuss it and try to come up with some options tonight to go forward with it.
Very good. Before I forget, Jan, Jan, are you out there? Is Jan listening to us, or she left us?
Yes, no, no, no. I'm here. I'm here.
Jan, are you ready to go? I don't want to forget you. So if you want to go and give us your impressions, please go ahead.
I will. I will. Again, I agree with Chris. Everybody was very, very good at their presentation. But I have to say, I agree with David's recommendations. I do like the Swanson-Hass Camp as my favorite pick for the simple reason when Mr. Lamb spoke, I felt, I felt that the confidence he has, and I feel that he is going to keep us truly on point, especially when we start going to form-based. I think his expertise is going to help us not be so much out in the weeds. And the timeline and the fact that they're coming up in in-person meetings, I think that is important, is important to me, anyway. So I, of all of them, I would like to see Swanson-Hass Camp. Landform is my second choice. So if that's all you need, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Teresa?
I'm sharing pretty much the same opinion as Jan. I think Swanson-Hass Camp has a very, very compelling presentation. I personally like the graphics and the readability of the example that they brought. I thought that was well done, and I'd like to see something like that for us, any.
Very good.
All right. I'll jump in. I like Landform. I was very impressed with Landform. And what I was impressed by was the competency that Kendra brought. She seemed to discuss like using social media in a sensible manner. The emphasis on graphics that I liked. The emphasis with Landform seemed to be less about meetings, less about task force, and more about just about having a process, working with us and getting input. But maybe less of a traditional, let's have a separate task force meet and things. I tend to think there may be a little fatigue in this area after the, after we went through the comp plan. They had to try to recruit another eight, ten great people to form another task force and to dive into this. So I'm a little skeptical on that. So I really was impressed by Landform. They were my number-one choice. I have no real problems with Hass Camp either. I thought they were good. I think I could certainly, we could certainly work with them. But I was a, I was a Landform guy. That's, I was very impressed.
Mr. Duval?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think my top three, as I looked at the scoring criteria in the RFP, what we asked for, and use that as a basis to try and organize these things. David, I'm sure you used a similar process at your RFP. The top three for me were HKGI, MSA, and SHC. And I liked that they hit all of those things. There were various in the RFP, the things that we were asking for. SHC, I liked a lot. And it was because of Michael Lamb. I think Michael Lamb was what drove the scoring for me on the experience of the firm, the experience of the team. They were very high-scoring in that regard. And I think it's the credibility and the competency and the confidence, Jan, that you mentioned. Landform did not score well, for me. And the reason was there wasn't a very strong public outreach component to their proposal. We had asked for that in the RFP, but it's a team of three, going back to that. And so they took a commando-team kind of approach. You're going to go in there, you're going to get the job done, and you're going to get out. And that's fine, and I'm okay with that. But the questions that I would have for you, David, is it looked like they wanted to take, you know, rather than a public outreach and information gathering, they wanted to do an inform and update approach, right? Inform and educate approach, which is fine, but they were really putting that on you. And the city's infrastructure, they will produce materials and you will figure out the means to distribute them, either through your Facebook or through your webpage and so. So there's a gut check piece there, that that's a piece of work for you or someone on your staff that has to keep that part of communication going so that we have an informed public as we move a very complex, changing product that's going to be different, that people are going to have a lot of questions on. So that was the only reason they didn't really pull strong. I agree with the other comments about the quality of the product, those weren't scoring criteria. There's this other category of bonus considerations. For HKGI, I like the way that they were proposing to do the review process in a way that it was digestible. That was helpful to me so that you don't get the dump and try and work through that. And at some point, you go home with toast. They had a solid team. Even, I think it was the MSA team said, well, yeah, you've got, I know you've got Jeff in the mix over here. So they're citing, you know, one of these charismatic, effective people in the world. And maybe that's the subcontracting group that you were talking about, Chris. I like the visualization tools that MSA was talking about. They had just a simple slider bar graphics, ways to, ways that you could not only look at the cartoon pictures in the ordinance, but tools you could use online, like people go to the county website to figure out, you know, parcel information and such. It's another information tool that people could access to understand what the ordinance means in an interactive way that they could say, oh, okay. So visualization tools, I didn't quite see that in SHC or Landform. You know, the video story, when you watch that, was very good. I don't know what that necessarily does for us, other than it sells a product and sells Brainerd in some fashion. But imagining a twist on that that might help people understand the ordinance. And apparently, they have a very creative videographer that can probably get us there. But there are also GIS tools there that I would hope we could negotiate into that budget so that we can have interactive pieces that our citizens of the city can have. Tools to help them understand and apply the ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Were your top pick, David? I'm going to put you on the spot. What were your top pick?
Well, I had, those top three were all pretty much pretty strong to me. I had a pod of them right there, so.
Okay, all right.
I'm very comfortable with SHC is the bottom line, right?
Okay. Hass Camp, yep, perfect.
Mr. Jaeger?
Mr. Chair. One of the things I love about this board is the right and left brain approach that seems to rear its head on pretty much every decision. I will admit that I am a right-brain thinker, and I tend to make, I tend to be most smitten by the people that just make an impact with me just as a person. So for that reason, I have two standouts, SHC and Landform. I will say that my top pick would be Landform also. And while I think there are a lot of dynamics that we've talked about here from contractual meeting and how to approach a product. Mrs. Lynn, she just seemed like she won it on our team. There was just something about her that just clicked with me. And her presentation of all of them felt less like us hiring a company and more like somebody who was just asking to be part of our team to make this work. I like the local aspect of her company as well. And she made a specific comment back to me on one of my questions regarding, when I pinned her down on one of the questions, she said that we will not be one of many clients. We will be her only client during that time. And that just really stuck with me. That being said, I feel like I could sit and listen to Mr. Lamb talk for about ten hours straight and have no fatigue whatsoever. He's just incredibly intelligent speaker, a very pleasant, charismatic speaker, and I was very intrigued by him as well. So those were my top two. I'd be perfectly happy with either of those. I'll leave those decisions up to whomever they are. But I would also like to say is that we were tremendously blessed with team, with all of the teams that were in front of us. I was, quite frankly, not expecting this decision to be this hard. So thank you for all of the, you know, for everybody who came forward. I'd be happy with any of them, quite frankly. But those were the two standouts for me. Thank you.
Chris, I'm just looking for a clarification. Who were your top two, three picks again? I can't remember exactly where I'm going to put you on the spot a little.
I think my top three, actually, I agree with Dave for the most part. I thought HKGI was real strong. And did you say MSA? They're real strong, too. I thought Swanson-Hass Camp, Mike Lamb was real good, and they have a generous meeting schedule, which I thought is really advantageous for something like this. So Landform wasn't in my top choices personally. That's not saying that they weren't very good as well.
All right. Well, this is interesting. So then, I'm just kind of doing, please, I'm taking my scoring judgment. But we think seemed to have three, definitely in the Hass Camp, if you will. And I should be calling them SHJ or something. Can we just call them Hass Camp? Because that's what I can remember here. So we have Woodward, Duval, and Lambert clearly on that. Me and Mr. Jaeger here, the right-brain side, I think we were very impressed with Landform. Again, I was just impressed with her competency and her presence. And I'm, nothing against big firms. I've worked with another process, a community process a few years ago. I worked with a very large firm. And it was just kind of, it was too much. We have three hundred people and twenty-five offices and this and that. They'd bring in somebody to make one presentation, you'd never see them again. So I made me a real fan of the smaller firms there. And I think Hass Camp or Landform would definitely, would fit that. So that's what we're kind of looking at at this point. Anybody want to take the next step here and kind of move towards the recommendation? Jan, are you out there?
Yes, I will. And I'd like to make a recommendation if I could.
Okay.
I would like to make a recommendation that we hire Swanson-Hass Camp consultants for our rewrite. And I still move.
All right. So we have a motion there. I'm kind of struggling here. Should we have a second motion, or should we just go ahead? And just looking for consensus here. Should we just consider Jan's motion here and just take action on it? What are you, what's y'all thinking?
I think we should second it, just for simplicity.
Naturally. Well, okay, so we'll open up the field. What I'm just trying to say is that I'm trying to, just trying to get everybody in. Because once we, once we do that, then that's the vote. Either we vote them in or we vote, or we don't vote them in. So I'm just trying to keep the decision open maybe a little longer.
Oh, okay. Well, then let's not do a second then, huh?
Well, you know, we can open it to a second. I've got no problem with opening it to a second here. I think that's procedurally, I think that's very fair that you made a motion, and we should ask if there's a second.
For Mr. Chair, might we broaden the proposed motion to have a backup as?
We, I would be, backup would be Landform. If we need to have that in there, I would make, I change my motion to that. I don't know. I'd have to have Dave. I don't know.
Put him on the spot here. What would the City Council feel if we made an A recommendation and a B recommendation? Would they say like, do your job? Or would they say, right? Or would they say, okay, we'll make a choice? I'm kind of thinking leaning towards there is going to say, do your job. But what do you think? What do you think, David?
Mr. Chair, you're all learning why I recommended two firms tonight and didn't recommend one. I could say I think the council would prefer just recommend who we should hire.
Okay, I can see that.
If they then have to go through this exact same process as you did, they didn't hear. My concern is the council didn't hear the interviews. I could provide them the RFPs, but then they had to read through them. And they haven't been through all the discussions that you all have. And so I think they really are going to be looking from the Planning Commission. You know, you as a body are going to be the main, other than staff, working with this consultant. And so I think they're looking, going to be looking to the Planning Commission saying, who, you know, you're going to be one of the working with this. You are going to be the council's eyes and ears working on this project. Who should we have?
Well, I think we looked at this kind of as the consensus. The closest we have is, it would be Hass Camp at this point. There's three, am I correct in saying there's three definite Hass Camps? And then there are, after that, we're kind of picking, there's two definite Landforms. And then Mr. Foley is comfortable with a few firms. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'd lean towards, for the sake of this, if we were to narrow it down to those two, I'd lean towards SHC personally.
Okay, back to Hass Camp. All right. Well, I kind of think we make, we need to make a call here and make a decision here. And so at this point, Jan, I really think we probably need to make one recommendation. I'd love to make two recommendations. I would love to see Landform get this. But, you know, this is a group process, and it's democracy. And right now, it looks like Hass Camp is getting the consensus here, and I'm comfortable with that. So, Jan, would you like to, did you restate our motion again?
I would go ahead and make the motion to recommend Swanson-Hass Camp Consulting for the rewrite of our zoning codes. And I still move.
Very good. Do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
We have a second from Mr. Duval. The discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
This is Jan. I'm just going to butt in. I think David had a very good point. The council is going to want us to make that decision since we heard all the evidence. So I think David made a very valid point for us to pick one, so just my, just my input.
I think that's where we're heading. Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, Mr. Chansky.
Lambert?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Woodward?
Yes.
Duval?
Aye.
and Gorham?
Aye. There we have it. I just want to thank everyone who, again, I think we were blessed with all those presentations and having all those firms here. That was terrific. This process has been good and a really interesting process here. So again, thanks to David, too, for all the work you put in presenting this. It's a lot of work to put these out and then get everybody together and have a nice night of presentations and some good discussion. So with that, we move on to item eight, would be commissioner's questions and or comments.
Flares open. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Duval?
Number one, I'm looking forward to this next chapter in implementing the comp plan. David, thank you again for bringing forward this effort to get us rolling. This is conversations that we've had for the first part of the year, interrupt. This is conversations that we've had uh for the first part of the year, interrupted by COVID, so I'm glad to see we've got wheels under this again. So thanks for that. Um, to that point, um, I would hope that this, this amendment process will visit issues like um, carrying our lighting conversation forward further. Um, lighted signs, um, we've, we've, we've have unfinished business there that this would be an opportunity as you're working the scope of these things to be able to ensure that we have opportunity to bring new information to us to consider and and also making sure that we have attention on certain parts of the ordinance that we were um wanting to come back to uh, for further, further adjusting and such, so. Those were two and there may be others that other members uh may remember or recall from, from our previous discussions. But the two that, that I know we spent time on and made some adjustments to. So this would include, you know, issues of lighting color and 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 operations and those sorts of things, thank you.
Very good. Other questions, other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Foley?
Assuming that uh, the city and presumably SHC or one of the other contractors are able to execute a contract next month and assuming that SHC's, SHC's schedule, um, that'll be the end of my term on the planning commission right when we put the new zoning code into um use. So I may have to reconsider rerunning because I'll be familiar with the zoning. I actually have a little more to offer on a, on a meeting to meeting basis by then, so. I'm looking forward to the next year and going through this process and it's a good chance to really, um, you know, take, take on some ownership and understanding of.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Chair, this is, this is Jan, you know, Mr. Chair, you shouldn't let Chris think about reevaluating, you just say, just assume that you're going to be here.
That's why I was in shock here, yeah, exactly. Exactly, I, I, I would agree. Uh, my first six months, even a year on, on this group, I was just going, what are we doing? And yeah, it was, there was a lot of that, it was, it took a while. You don't do yes. Other questions or comments? I'm hearing none, which means we move us, moves us on to item nine, the Community Development Director's Report.
I was generally have two things. Um, the first thing is at 7:30 tomorrow morning in this room, the EDA will be holding a special meeting to consider a request to purchase the remaining 13 lots in Phase Four of the industrial park. For those unaware, the Phase Four is pretty much the east side of TC Road where FedEx is. There are 13 remaining lots in that area. Um, we have received a request to purchase those lots from Anderson Brothers Construction. They're seeking to buy those lots uh and create a new maintenance facility, office space and move their operation from their current location on Highway 210 to the industrial park. The reason I bring this up is because as part of this purchasing process, um, per a policy that the city council and the EDA worked on, um, a subsidy policy, Anderson Brothers is requesting to purchase roughly 25.22 acres at a cost of $1 an acre. Um, and the purpose of that, it is created, is a business subsidy and there's a process we must go through. So I just want to make you aware that on October 21st, one of the items that will be on the planning commission's um agenda is per that process is, will be creating um, ten, not, not, in a way findings of fact, those aren't the, the terms that's necessary, but confirming that yes, this potential development is in, um, corresponds with the comprehensive plan. So right now, the, the, the calendar looks like this, that they're going to go before the EDA tomorrow morning. Uh, the EDA is going to consider yes or no, do they want to sell the property to Anderson Brothers? If they do, um, they will be making a recommendation to the city council to sell the land and then to convey the land that is currently owned by the council back to the EDA. There is a method to that madness in that by the EDA, um, state statute gives certain powers to EDAs where um mainly there is a right to reverter clause. So in the developers agreement, um, you put ti- time down, it says you must develop your entire project within a certain amount of time. If at that time, five, 10, 15 years, whatever that is, you know, you haven't developed your project fully and there is still vacant land, this, the EDA can take that land back to be redeveloped for another purpose. So that is why there's that piece. Um, on October 8th, the EDA has a regular meeting, at that time, there's an, there are two public hearings that they will be holding. Um, and then at that hearing, that's when they will vote to formally sell the land pending the planning commission's um review that it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So after October 8th, um, once the other results of that meeting, you will be provided with what has happened um, in preparation for the 16th and making the determination, and I'll provide a recommendation as well, determination is, is that um, that potential development uh in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So that's just the main thing, so just aware of that coming down the pike. The second thing I have, um, it's more administr- I guess you call it administrative. Uh, on Monday, I mentioned before, the city council did have a budget workshop. On Monday, they'll be approving the preliminary levy. In that budget workshop, we did submit to them a request to reorgani- to reorganize the Community Development Department. Specifically over the last year, um, well, last year, going back into 2019, I have had two retirements within the department. First was Lori Johnson, who was our permit technician. Um, when she retired, we took the opportunity and reorganized her position a little bit into the zoning technician slash permit tech position that James is in right now. Um, the goal of that was to help a little bit on the zoning side. We identified that there was a need um on the zoning side to have some more assistance. Our hope was that with the implementation of our BSNA, our new BSNA software, permitting software, that um, it would free up more time for the person who was selected, turned to be James, to help have kind of more hands-on role in the part, in the planning and zoning operation of the Community Development Department. Um, kind of as it turned out, again, we hadn't implemented yet, uh, we implemented BSNA in April. As it turned out, what we observed was that while it definitely increases efficiencies in, in different areas, especially allowing multiple people to do reviews simultaneously, when before we literally walked around and handed off a packet, a paper packet. There is still a, a need for a permit technician to um take in applications, especially even once we go permanently on the law, online November 1st, to assign applications, assign reviews and keep things rolling. And as well as being a face to the, face to the building side of our department, mine department, um, in that we are actually now down to only two inspectors, it used to have to be three. Which goes to the second piece, is in March, uh, building official Chuck Arvidson also retired. Um, with his retirement, uh, we had the opportunity to promote building inspector Darren De Seth to building official and then my, and then housing inspector Jason Stockinger to building inspector. At that time, uh, we saw that there was a efficiency to be had or we could, we could have in that, uh, we felt that we could go with by with only two inspectors. Um, instead of the three, the housing, the building and the building official. Um, so we took some time to see how it went with just the two. We felt that yes, this is work, we don't need a third inspector. So as part of the budget, I did request the council to reorganize and turning the um, the housing inspector position into an assistant planner position. And then the zoning tech, uh, zone, the, the zoning specialist permit tech back to a specifically a, a, uh, an administrative permit tech position. So in the next few months, as the, as the budget gets approved, um, we'll be going through the hiring process for an assistant planner, which I'm extremely excited about. Um, assisting me in um, planning duties. Uh, this person will be primarily responsible for some of, some of the day-to-day planning activities. Um, they'll kind of be the, the first person to pick up the phone for questions about setbacks and basic planning and zoning. They'll do most of the basic plan reviews for new constructions and, and fence permits and things like that. Um, so they'll kind of be like that ground level, um, doing all those planning reviews. And then my job um will be kind of the higher level thing, so comprehensive planning, um, master planning, zoning code update. Um, that'll be kind of my level, so I'll still be involved, I'll still be the direct person working with the planning commission. I'm just excited that we'll have some additional help, um, especially as we're getting the zoning code update going. So that person, once they're in, in onboard, um, will be working directly with the planning commission and SHC as well, um, throughout this update, so. Let the planning commission know that that's going to be moving forward and we should have a new person uh working with us in the next few months.
Very good.
Thank you. Sixty-three thousand.
I was just wondering if the city has any land they can sell me for a dollar an acre? I'm ready for that. Um, item number 10, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, is, now you can, do we need to do a roll call?
We do need a roll call, Mr. Chair.
Do the roll call.
Lambert?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Woodward?
Yes.
Duval?
Aye.
And Gorham?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jan.